Ready to begin?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we go to 2.0, I'm just gonna ask if we take a moment of silence for the families of Texas. All right. The TKO gender approval.
I would like to have one right up to the dinner. 5.05.
5.05.
That comes right before 5.05. We can call it 5.07.
You can say what it is.
Okay, I'll tell you what it is. It's a special recognition award for Mr. Briggs.
Second. A discussion. All in favor? All right. Back to the gender approval. Yeah. Okay, we're good? All right, that brings us to 3.0, visitors to address the board. This is the time for public comment on non-dedicts. The board will not take any immediate action, but refer concerns to superintendent and ask him to report to the board. Appreciate keeping your comments to three minutes per individual or five minutes if you're representing a group of people. Please note under or revise status personnel concerns, we will not be discussing about me. If you have any concerns with school district personnel, please schedule an meeting with the superintendent. Does anyone have any visitors to address the board? I'm present, all right. Welcome to 4.0 consent agenda.
Literally 7% agenda.
Any discussion? All in favor? New business, that brings us to 5.05.
Mr. Briggs, come on up here. You can stand up. We should probably run out there, but we're gonna be back here because we wanna shake hands. So, Mr. Briggs and I go back a week or two in this life and
We won't say how long.
No, but a long time. And I was a teacher and a coach. And there are two bus drivers that I remember in my 52 years with this district. And that was Bob Peter and Chuck Briggs. And they have carried our kids, Bob did, he's no longer with us, but they've carried our kids, oh my gosh, and me. And had to listen to me for long road trips. I just have to say that that it's really, really special to have those folks that are dedicated enough to drive to California, to seaside Astoria, to Dillon, like to seaside Astoria, to seaside. And I started saying, gosh, it's hard for me to ride the bus, much less drive it in the fog. And so I just have to say, I really appreciate it. We have a little something for you here. This is Christie's leftover wrapping from something else, but I go ahead and you can open that. Maybe, yeah. Anything to the full board is good. I have former students in high places.
This young man was in the band when I was president of the band.
Yes, I was. And I'm the band chair patron.
And then this guy and me were on the school board together for a really long time, a while ago, too.
I found that out yesterday when I was at Columbia City, because our names are on that plaque.
I know.
I think I can sneak past. You can, you can. Thank you. Now, that's not a, that's not really anticipated. No, it's not a puzzle. It tried to come apart when I took a dive. I will tell you that that is not really a, go ahead and retire gift.
We are letting.
Yeah. It turned out.
All right, that brings us to 5.1, the recognition of the senior National Honor Society member, Brian Dickerson.
Good evening, it's my pleasure to introduce our seniors tonight in NHS National Honor Society. The four pillars are scholarship, character, service, and leadership. And this group certainly represents the best of that, and it might be the biggest group of seniors we've had in NHS. And I'd like to have them line up in what little space we have left here. We have quite a few of them here tonight, so Joanna Bennett.
He was not Joanna.
No.
We have Stephanie Olle. Skylena Harper. Allison Kube. Allison. The Hall of Compton. Emma Durant. Drew Erickson. Trevor Erlinson. Desmond Halliday. Rachel Brightag. Hannah Haiduk. James Johannick. Spencer Lyons. Thomas Millsap. And Abigail Ogdol. Gisarel Ortiz. Andrew Fletch. Katie Fletch. Katie is our NHS president this year, and I think Beth Sterns. Piper Tilling. Sarah Vanderwerf. Phoebe Van Hook. Elizabeth Watkins. Molly Reildin. Molly was our VP this year. Monica Linkler. And Grace Woodruff. There we go, would you please give this group a big
Mr. Briggs? You left your present on the bottom of that bus. We threw it under the bus. Yes, we have no bananas, it's not a story.
All right, that brings us to 5.2. Limit and St. Helens Middle School, the SP reports. So, first up. In the back, there's, but it's a little USB. Push it in, pops out, and slide into a USB port on the computer. Technology.
I said, hey, you just don't want.
First up, we have Morley, which is basically our underclassmen prom. The date of it was April 9th in the Symbolic Commons. Our spirit days for this were 50s, sock hop day, research versus socialites day, 60s, Ruby 70s day, 80s rock star day, and 90s state prom day. We did a fundraiser for the Autism Society of Oregon. This was how we decided our royalty for this dance. The total amount raised was $2,492.30 in our planner with a total of roughly $500, was Emma Morley's. And our total profit for the dance was $387.30. Staff appreciation week, this was taken on by Hannah Haiduk. We did, we did different things for each day of the week. Monday, we did chocolates and thank you cards on their desks. Tuesday, we did a float day. Wednesday, we had lunch catered to them by live catering. Thursday, we had snacks and coffee card access. Friday, we scheduled massage appointments and coupons for them. And we also had the thank you cards delivered by all the campus students. Prom, this was May 7th at the Holiday Collective in St. John's. Spirit days for this dance were Jam Day, Adam Sandler Day, dressed like Adam Sandler. Prince or princess, we brought back anything but a backpack day. We also did this new thing called barbecue dads versus soccer moms. That was actually really fun. We had 257 people buy tickets. We're still waiting on a total profit, but that should come soon. In total, the court raised $795.84. And our royalty were Sarah Robinson and Ole Jarenas from Norway. Seniors to seniors superlatives and court emperor and empress. Seniors superlatives, this is just general stuff that the senior class votes on for their fellow classmates. For example, like policy, shortest senior, most athletic, life of the party, most likely to become president, you know, stuff like that, that you always kind of like to just kind of judge people based on the nut really. And for the court emperor and empress, we're thinking of doing a thing where we take all of the previous court royalty for this year, so for prom and homecoming and moral, and have the student body vote on who should be the court emperor or empress. So this will be the winner of them all for this year. Yeah, that's something we're really gonna prioritize. And then we are pressing for our graduation week, June, that'll be the actual date of graduation, is June 10th at 7:00 p.m. We have a senior spirit week coming up next week. The spirit days are after high school plans, walk in your book, which is like you wear a white t-shirt and sign it, dress like your career, and line pride, just wear a line here. June 8th is our senior walk-in barbecue, the academic war assembly, and the senior cruise and sunset. And then June 9th is our senior sunset. That's it? Can I ask to clarify question? Yes. What is anything but a backpack? We're sure I'd be asking, do I have to ask? So, you, you take anything but a backpack with you and use that to carry all of your books and school supplies for the day. So, for example, I brought a cooler. Multiple students brought shopping carts. Like, they went to Safeway, asked the manager if they could borrow a shopping cart for the day, and they were able to load that around school. If you look online, you'll see some students, they'll bring in like service dogs, and they'll have like a cute little backpack on it. And they'll, some students have brought boats to school, like canoes, and they're just walking through the hallways carrying it. It's just a lot of fun. So that's what anything but a backpack day is. Very cool.
We have wheelbarrows, laundry baskets.
I think there was actually talk of bringing younger citizens. I would love to do that personally. Anything else? Thank you, Brett.
Yeah, graduation link.
That brings us to 5.3, school reports. Yeah. Let's put start with.
And we're not quite as good as I guess, but we'll try.
This is gonna wrap up the business.
Elementary and early learning. We hosted our kinder welcome event in all three elementary schools. And Reddy Freddy the Frog visited all of them. Bus rides, all the different events, classroom activities, meet the teacher, introduction, principal, all that. Planting the sunflowers. So it was really nice to return to those kind of traditions and welcome our incoming kindergarten families. Have a nice turnout in all of our communities. Excellent, so a lot we learned in Columbia City, we are all about the animals right now in our science work. So kindergarten has been learning about the life cycle of the butterfly and hatch and release some butterflies, and that was pretty exciting. And then third grade worked on a salmon documentary as part of their culminating event of their salmon expeditions. They made a video, which it played forward to Mr. Sackler, like it said it to, too, but they created this really outstanding documentary that they wrote, they directed and performed. And worked on some of their speaking skills and their writing skills. So, and Lady is showing all about the parts of salmon. I think that was some quite cool. We have been grateful for all of our community partners, like our coach officers who visited our school a couple weeks ago, and then again today, and our kindergarten had cards ready to present to them. Their presence here today, very reassuring and a highlight for the kindergarteners who asked really fabulous questions. They arrested, too, how many donuts? Quite entertaining. And we made cards for our school nurses and all of those. And then our PTO, we are certainly grateful for, they were able to provide some money to remake our staff room. Which had kind of become a, just a place for mailboxes and, you know, kind of utilitarian and not in kind of a school that couple of years. So it was really nice to create a warm welcoming environment and much appreciated by staff. Really owe a huge thank you to our PTO for providing the funds. And then Krista Mosley and Lori Johnson did the work, so Krista's design. Everybody learning reports, you might recognize some of these little our infants and toddlers have been enjoying eating the birds outside our little atrium. And the toddlers have made bird eaters, the whole trash more birds. Birds to watch. And then our mini mustings are planted in pots and in the garden, the autumn pots, so we did art from rocks.
All right, you want to make right? Yeah, when we go back, we don't need to go back slides, but I do wanna talk about kindergarten welcome that we had. Parents just being so excited, but also nervous, because they were sending their kindergarten to next fall, which is the anxiety that some of the parents were feeling. But I tried to just alleviate that by saying, hey, when the future kindergarten right now is gonna get on the bus, tour the neighborhoods, first ride on the bus, say, hey, parents, you're also gonna go to the Columbia County Speedway, and there's a laughter, you guys. So, we wanna make sure that the parents feel supported as well as the students. Here, we're just so enthusiastic and excited to continue supporting students with STEAM, in addition to library and music. Is that, is that music, library, and STEAM? So it's just a wonderful opportunity for students to continue learning. Now, this picture tells you, there's a story behind this. Going through my camera roll, I have a lot of photos of students showing me their roots, too. And that's really a conversation starter with, hey, how's your, how's your youth doing in kindergarten, first grade, lost a few, but then tell me about your day. That's where we'll tell a story about their learning and their new discovery, and what they're going on to tell their parents, what they're excited about. And that's, I think, the sentiment that we share amongst our elementary leadership team, just sharing those stories of success, curiosity, and learning. So that's a wonderful thing. Our team just mentioned this a moment ago. Our staff, all 68, were able to sign a thank you note for our PTO, which was just so supportive of the recent staff appreciation. And just giving, showing up each day with just equal tokens of appreciation, some signed student cards, some, a little lunch, and just some neat gifts to give to our students, to give to our staff, to show appreciation for the parents they give to students. And it's just fantastic to have it's full board, and I do need to make an announcement there. We've been operating, I mean, right, with one, one parent at our PTO, but just recently we're able to have a full board. So happy to share that as assessments. So. I totally wanna have high school, but I work at St. Lucas as well. So, St. Helens Middle School, Chris Bully, principal, can you name more members? This is our River Hawk report, but we're gonna do it a little bit differently today. So on the next slide, you'll see, we only have one success to report out today, but it's a really big one, and that's REEP. And, and this organization, as well as the students, and its impact it's had on our school and our community. So it's been a massive success, and I brought some members of the REEP program with us to share a little bit about their experience. But I'm gonna step aside and introduce you to Sarah Cantu, who is our REEP advisor. And she's gonna tell you a little bit about what REEP is doing in the school, and then we'll hear from the students.
So my name is Sarah, and I'm the REEP advisor coordinator for REEP. And so they put me in, think about February is when I came in and had been working with students. And so, right now, we have about 40 students in school. That's officially that I'm interacting with, having one-on-ones, one trees, and coming to after-school program events. Part of that is, we call them lunch parties, where I go grab them for lunch, and we just hang out, and it's another week. They're not able to come to after-school program, they still get that time of REEP. Some of our successes have been hosting restorative conferences, addressing racial bias, and other things like that, which I believe Joseph will speak on. Today, we had our first field trip, which is a bowling event. So we were able to take 30 of our 40 students to that, and we had a lot of fun. And then tomorrow night, we have our REEP family night, and this is a place for our students to bring their whole family to meet REEP, as well as principal, and just see what we're doing with the school. With that being said, we're gonna have Joseph present how REEP has impacted his experience at school, as well as his life.
REEP has made school a safer place for me, because this year, although I came from Portland, so I didn't expect to be dealing with so much racial, racially motivated stuff coming towards me. And they have been like a safe place to help me speak on the racial bias that is in our school. And I think that it has really helped uplift a lot of people this year and help our young leaders get a way to speak out or have people to talk to about their problems and struggles.
So, REEP really is a multicultural youth leadership program that really is creating quite an impact school-wide. And one of the cool things that wasn't mentioned, that I've had the pleasure of myself as a principal of grown, and that is, I get people like Sarah to come into our disciplinary meetings, our interactions with parents, and really give a different perspective, a perspective of diversity and what they're going through, and what they need, and how to best support them, and ways we can reflect on our systems and our ways of interacting with students or dealing with situations, and how we can improve those to support all types of students. So it's been pretty awesome for me as a principal of grown and learn, both from the students and from the That's our report.
REEP could really help anybody, doesn't matter even what race or how you act or anything. It could also just be someone you could just go to and talk to, because I, most of my friends are really friendly, and I've only made like, like, everybody in there, I feel, in freshman, they are kind of standoffish, because it's just brand new and stuff like that, but
But I can get them after a really while, you get really close and you just break those. And like at the event at the boarding, I had so much fun and we really just messed around pretty much the whole time. But with the pizza and food, so we got images of just great video and it was a great surprise.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Katie Wagner from Slough County High School. Wanted to first share a couple of celebrations that Colton did not speak to. And that's some of the incredible showings that our school has had at the state competition level recently. We ended up with Ashley Hannah Hadeau, who received her award for National Honor Society, placed second in the state in the 400 meter and set a new school record and a personal record. We also had Kaylee Kester finished sixth in the girls 100 high hurdles. And she now holds our school's ninth grade girls' record in that event. So we had some pretty incredible showing at track and field. We also had, we ended up with five out of our seven ending up placing in the top 10. So pretty incredible. We also are the five A state band champions. So we brought home that championship, which is the first time since the eighties that that has happened. We also placed seventh in the state with choir. So we had incredible showing there. So and then we also placed third in state in Equestria and Duro, and they are on their way to regionals on June 17th. So pretty incredible student accomplishments, just in the recent recent past. I did want to share a couple more celebrations. This is an activity that we did with our staff. And we wanted to celebrate different things that have gone on with our school over the past year and as it relates to our three inflection maxims. So I've shared that with the board that we've been doing some work around courageous, dedicated and prepared and what that means for our student outcomes and a common vision for student readiness. And so these are some of the celebrations that I wanted to share with you. Obviously, there's been a lot of change in the high school with construction and shifting the portables and introducing some new classes, introducing some new programs, some new staff. So a lot of lot of shifts this year. So it's always great to end with some celebrations. So courageous, we open our minds to new perspectives and have the confidence to do the right thing. One that I thought was great, but portables work out much better for me than I had thought. So so that was that created a little bit of uncertainty at the beginning. We had teachers that were excited about first time teaching a new class. One that mentioned how students learn how to write music and so they are composing. The unfortunate tragedy of yesterday's event in Texas, some students were processing their emotions by composing music today. So being able to apply those skills. We have our St. Helens High School GSA, our Gender Centrality Alliance and supporters were invited to march in the Portland Pride Parade in June. That is the first time ever. And so we also have a group of middle school prison students that plan to attend as well. So there's going to be a showing. We had our first year of language direct selectives. We had teacher teach speech for the first time. So a lot of courage, right? And we're really excited to be this day. Dedicated, our learning labs are ready to see this this year. So that's an opportunity for some extra tutoring two times a week. Second semester, students took school more seriously. I think they finally started getting back into coming back to school in person. We had one student told me they were working so hard at Spanish that they grumped in Spanish. So that is a huge celebration right there. We also had some ninth grade interns that we invited into our programming with our ninth grade success team to help inform how students are doing and hopefully some of the interviews. We have regular collaboration with our math departments. Our leadership received a golden word from the Oregon Association of Student Councils, so three incredible celebrations there. And then finally, prepared, we have the skills and resilience to meet life's challenges. We have first year teacher that said, I'm immigrated with lots of new ideas and really excited about next year. We're adapting to our facilities. The summer equipment really helped to strengthen the programs. Adapting to transition, students completed a year long project that looks great and completed all the required paperwork to a T. So that's a big, big celebration there. And then winter play switched to films at the last minute when two actors were out with COVID. So that is quite the pivot to be able to do that. So I think what this really demonstrates is how we are already leaning into our school identity and how we're able to celebrate all of these different accomplishments at different levels and really make this look visible. So this is this infographic right here is the think, act, think, no, act and go, which helped us identify what our maxims would be. This is just some information about think and how important problem solving, creativity, curiosity and communication are. All of our students will actually receive this infographic. So we want to make sure that we're intentional about teaching them about why each of these different areas are important in their lives, both at school and at home. So there's going to be some specific lessons around that. Here's some information around no, so tackling challenges, connecting the dots, effective reading, writing and math. And this is really important for students to understand the why of what they're doing, which is not particularly impactful and how it impacts them after they graduate. Acting is around a goal setting, a motivation and collaboration. Collaboration has been a key point of our area of focus for our audit program and continuing to use these strategies schoolwide. Goal setting is an area that we're planning to expand upon this next year. And then finally, go is empathy, advocacy for self and others, self-awareness and financial literacy. We do address financial literacy in our economics classes, which is a required class, but we also have a personal finance class that's available to students as well. So this, you see a lot more of the empathy and advocate for self and others in our importance of connecting to community in one of our, for dedication. So a couple of things that we're working on right now is master scheduling. So trying to get all 800 students course requests kind of all organized into a beautiful board that is incredible matrix. So the goal is to have that completed so that we are ready two weeks before school for counselors to finish cleaning everything up, make schedules available with students before registration. And then our registration will be on the Wednesday and Thursday before school starts. So Wednesday will be for any students who are new to the school. Thursday will be for our current students to make sure that we're serving our community and answering questions appropriately. And then we're working on gathering input from staff and families on our current systems or current policies, making sure that we have input into how things went this year and working through that continuous improvement cycle and making sure we're addressing needs and moving forward in the next year with some pretty solid plans and.
This is the 5.4 business report.
First two items. First four of which are actually items that the board acting in capacity has, will contract renewal for the district will need to approve, this is summary memo sent with the board packet. And the first item is the five year contract renewal with Durham Student Services. This would extend the contract through June 30th, 2027. We have been collaboratively working with Durham through the price proposal that they were able to get together. Unfortunately, we work in an open, not unfortunately, we work in an open capital market and we know that there are job shortages and we know prior to the pandemic, there were drivers because of the various licensing requirements, front training requirements and also just the nature of the work, not full time jobs typically for full years. It's hard to recruit and retain drivers, the COVID-19 pandemic exacerbated that fact. Thankfully though, I will say St. Helens, when I go to regional statewide meetings has fared pretty well with the drivers. We were able to maintain, I think the board, you might recall, beginning, we closed schools. We worked with Durham to modify their contract for a first year closure so that we could retain drivers and we put them to use, supporting students through the rules and instructions. That kept a lot of our drivers engaged with the district. And when we started school this year, the three that cannot return, we either had our member wanted to retire or you know, wasn't, you can say were were neutral, so they were being a profession. So anyways, this is a five year contract renewal. And that's because when we originally engaged Durham, that contract allows for up to five total statements. So our contract has two parts. We have a fixed monthly cost, which covers the core staff, the bus farm costs, the bus maintenance costs, et cetera. Then we pay for our drivers through a per mile charge. So we can see that that fixed cost component is going to increase by approximately 10%. And we'll take a breath because, you know, we've tried to whittle the numbers down, but the per mileage rate is something by 32%. And the mile rate schedule was provided in the packet. That's the packet I sent out that will be on page two. So there are some things working in our favor. We heard feedback from athletic and activity staff. And we experienced it in terms of planning uses of buses, that it would be nice to have smaller buses to be able to take sports teams or groups that have 14 or less students to events, person having to take a big bus. And so one of the items that we're going to be able to incorporate into this contract are two small activity buses. They're conventional type 20 buses. So if our district staff wants to go through the licensure requirements, they can actually check these buses out and take them to some of the events that have smaller student counts. Be really great because of our incorporation of the COOPLE League. Mr. Amos mentioned, right, it was our guest Astoria, Tulum, Seaside. That is the reality of next year. So those small activity buses will help us chip away at that, especially 32% for my. Just a reminder, 70% of our reimbursable travel is reimbursed by the state. Both of our mileage is going to be that. But you know, we'll continue to monitor this next year. I felt like when we prepared the budget, we knew that people were excited to return to tradition, including film trips, sorry, the kids are really excited to do those things. But we also know that gas is extremely expensive. We did our best to create a realistic budget, which includes these options in that, when we put the budget together with me. But we'll continue to monitor it, monitor it just so we can work internally as a leadership team. You know, should the numbers run higher than. Do you want me to move on to the student nutrition items or?
Is it? When we played games, kids auditioned. This is, I think, not our policy. I don't think they, they had to find their own range. So their parents drove them. That was the reality, we don't have lessons.
My understanding is that some spirits are still writing their students. We haven't had to do that. I will have to commend Michelle White, the exemplary manager who really takes care of her staff. Other team at Durham and we're thankful for them. All right. And this, moving on to bread, vegetables and milk. So USDA has procurement standards for these items. And so we went out through a formal procurement. I believe you also saw the summary memorandums about this process. It is a dog eat dog world in terms of procurement these days. I put out four procurements in the last four months, which received no response. So anyways, but we were thankful to have our pre-doing partners come through specifically for bread, dairy and produce. We had to put it out again because of miscommunication about the deadline. But anyways, we have fixed price agreements with either quarterly or annual escalators that tie to USDA price trackers. So now especially as we look at the first year of the pitch of fueling students, it's like having reliable partners. We're really doing a lot of hard work, their supply chains. It's hard to find certain things. We often know that the first few, we request for any place in order. So the partners as well. Those will be five of our price arrangements as well. Or should let you know, our other main contract is with Cisco. So all of those providers don't provide, we also do some part of school grants for the kind of procurement through Plattsville County, but Cisco is on a cooperative use agreement. So okay. Dividing from local contract review board items, last item is going to be a formal plan of action in response to our financial audit deficiencies that we had last year. I apologize, the last time we did this, we prepared a plan of action and we sent it to the Secretary of State because it was a budget compliance issue. And so that was not addressed in our management report. That's actually already included in our audit. So we wrote the letter, we sent it to the Secretary of State, checked the box. The two findings we had last year were actually incorporated in our federal audit and we included our management response to those findings in the financial statement that we sent to the Secretary of State. I thought that that satisfied the requirement. We sent a letter saying, no, we still need a board action report signed by the board chair. And so I copied and pasted what we put in our financial statement audit onto the action plan and would request your approval so we can then submit it to the secretary. Those are, that's my report. That was way too much work.
Thank you. Move this to 5.5 secret report. Yeah, I've got two items. The first one hopefully can wrap up our session on graduation requirements. And the next one is I wanted to review what we do with our standard response protocol in light of the tragic Texas. Our community understands that we have a plan and we can use a plan or something that really, I guess in my mind, my heart feel like it's crazy that they have a plan for this. So graduation requirements, the big, I guess my, my assessment is the biggest concern is around world languages. We're hard trying to gather data on the number of Fs by grade. It's been shockingly challenging to get those based on the nuances of our system. So that's something I'm working on. I do have some preliminary data from last semester. And I left my email on my desk, but I written down what I believe is pretty close within plus or minus. So overall, last semester, we had 40% of our students not pass the foreign language. Freshmen, I believe, was somewhere between 10 and 12. Sophomores were about 15 students. Juniors had about 10 students and seniors had those students not pass the class. So what I have heard from US Board is that we need to do something because there's just concern. Again, and what I'm hearing is primarily around the foreign language. We talked about delaying, pushing back, maybe having just one required class. And we can do that and whatever we decide is best for kids, we can make it happen. There are, though, when we begin to change the requirements of the report card, when we transcript things, it creates some headaches that's beyond, beyond what I can clearly explain to everyone just by categorizing, for example, a class. It might have to be Spanish one A and Spanish one B because one counts for this type of diploma. The other one counts for the diploma. So I have a potential solution that I'd like to suggest for the board to consider. And I think it aligns with what you're thinking. If not, you know, certainly, certainly talk about it. But during COVID, we shifted our grading, if you recall, to ABCD no grade. And so I'm wondering if we have the next two or three years, whatever that timeline is, we apply that grading system to our language courses. So make it ABCD no grade. And, and if it's a no grade, then they get an automatic wait. They don't need to graduate. So by doing it that way, we don't have to go back into the system and make adjustments to the type of diploma. We can have them roll forward and it would not impact their transcript.
Would that no grade then allow them to take another shot at it?
Sure.
That's, that's the one thing is that, okay, I got a no grade. It's like I never took it. So I'm just going to go ahead and take another shot at that if I wanted to. But I'm a little older now. I'm a junior instead of a freshman.
Yeah.
I think it's just the foreign language. I mean, as soon as they weren't able to do a CTE class or they don't have an elective class. And I'm just feeling the extension of those.
CTE classes as well, the two CTE classes.
Okay, because you have to have at least two or three, or whatever it is in the CTE. You have the three electives and the two foreign language. So, but to me, they've been on COVID. And those two years are twenty years in ways that they just can't lift them up unless they change their senior year plan. I would, I don't know. I don't think that there's anything on modifying it for those two years back to a reset. Or what would be the majority of our markets? We have risk, you know, risk that are.
Increase the rigor. We, we can, we can definitely do that. Again, the challenge is going to be managing the transcripts. You don't, you don't like the no grade piece if we apply that to.
Because they still think a box two. So you do things across the board and keep it easy. That makes more sense to me than just pulling a couple boxes here and a couple there.
I, I don't know if it's a matter of work. I, I know changing the diplomas is going to take some, but we can do that. That's, that's not the, the.
I think it's working with nutrition, the staff, nutrition, the parent, everything on board. And we follow through and we actually.
With the no grade or with changing the requirement? What others?
Well, I still, I still believe in what I said before, Wes, that I, I still wish, I know that for right now, we're in general with the classroom. But I'd rather that our kids went into those classes already knowing practically what they need to be learning in there so that they're actually going on with their Spanish or on with French. That's where we decide. But so that we work with our staff at the high school for what are things that could be introduced to these kids clear back to kindergarten so that we don't go through this and we don't have kids struggling suddenly in eleventh grade and trying to figure out how to do it just so they can graduate. And a lot of them not caring at that point because it's too difficult. And they just have to do it just so they can graduate.
Jennifer's antenna just went up.
Good, Jennifer. Wait, maybe no, maybe it's about.
I kind of agree with what Kelly said, maybe do a pause on it, just kind of get caught up. And I understand the no grade. So that means they take it, if they didn't pass, it'd be a no grade. To technically, you know, kids can go in there and say, I'm just going to do it, I'll skip over it. You know, yeah, wasting time where we could go take another elective, then maybe better, more. You know, I, you know, kind of ease back into it. But maybe just take a break and make it a requirement.
Well, for example, today, a, a kid came running up to me, so this is Coach Bill, check this out. There you go, my friend. And it's all eighty-twos, ninety-ones. And I went, holy cow, because it was all Fs before. And I go, tell me about it. So part of it is, I'm always in favor of the opportunity of a kid to take another try. I, in college, for me and for some of you, I mean, I, one of my friends, it's a PhD in electrical engineering. He said, Hannah, class, I took it four times before. There's one that I took three times. I know all about taking the class three times and worrying about the withdrawal date so that I, it wasn't that I wasn't going to do it. But if you have a grade in the class, the way it always worked for me is, okay, now you got to take the next class. And crap, you don't have the stuff to take the first class. But if you can get another chance at it, and especially where we encourage a kid, take a class early as a freshman or a sophomore, and oh, man, you know, that just didn't work. The kid goes up a little bit. You, anybody who's been in education in the high school level knows that the difference between a freshman and a junior is the difference between dinosaurs and whatever, you know. I just, it just, they, these kids mature and they become students and they're excited about. This kid is all of a sudden that I met today, he's excited about school. And it is the last person I ever thought would be excited about school. But when he comes to come out running up to me and says, check out my phone, but then I, I realize that, that there's always that kid. And that's, that's the kid I worry about. I don't worry about the straight A and I don't worry about as much about the kid that there's nothing. I worry about that kid that suddenly the light went on and by golly, I hope I didn't make it impossible. And that's the one that I'm always, always, always have worried about. I, to this day, I'll sit down with the kid and do math in the library, whatever school they're at because I can take two hours to do six problems and it's okay with me. I've been there. And, and those are special, special things that get kids going. I don't want to put something out. I love the idea where you say, okay, honey, you struggled. You gave it a try. I, I don't see anything wrong with giving them a try, but I hate telling a kid he's a failure unless he's a failure. And there's some kids that struggle like mad and don't make it. That doesn't make them a failure. That makes them, I didn't make it, make it over the hurdle this time. My granddaughter would not be a tennis player. She was going, she couldn't get the ball over the net and then she wrecked her wrist and she was, I'm done. And she's doing okay now. And the reason is because, you know, there was a coach that said, no, no, calm down. It's okay. And we realized, you know, we're not going to count that score. That's the stuff that I go for and, and I've been doing it for a long, long, long time. And, and those, I just want to make sure that we worry about that kid that's maybe struggling a little bit. Because I, I was real determined, but there's some things I just didn't learn easily. And I had to try and try and try again. Some of it I still haven't learned, but it's not for lack of trying. And so I, I, yeah, some kids will cop out. Some kids will just quit, but they're more likely to quit if you're giving them an F. I will guarantee you, if they have an F, right now I'm dealing with another student and I'm trying to figure out ways to get extra work for this guy. I have to, it's kind of a negotiation process because there's different philosophies between the person writing the grade and me. But it's okay. I don't write the grade and I, don't even talk to me about it. I'm not talking to parents, but that's, that's not my deal. But the kid was expressing, I got an F anyway, why bother? And I'd rather say, okay, you're not going to get a grade to get everything you can. You're still JV. You're not going to play this season. But if you keep shooting hoops, maybe we might improve, you know, it's, it's, that's, that's, that's what I go for. And so I really like your idea. I mean, I don't know what we have here. And I really like her idea about why on earth did we start a kid out junior?
We, we would love to, and we've had conversations about moving.
Language is lower and some of these things, yes.
So that's something that we definitely can work towards. And I, you know, I have similar worries of Brian sharing. Well, then if I, I'm assigned to the class, that doesn't matter. But I'm sure there'll be some kids like that, maybe with some kids that will, with papers, not necessarily work, so.
Yeah, so I talked to the gentleman right now, but if you fail, just for example, algebra one, you still may register for algebra two. And then you get a falder monthly and that's crazy. I don't know what, so why are you in Spanish two? Did you move that? And how was I in that one?
It's, it's a little bit different when we're talking about standards. And so if a child fails algebra one, then we know that they're missing these gaps in these standards. They can go back and make up some standards. So that would, that would move forward because, you know, there's gaps.
Well, I guess it's like that to me, you know, a kid would come to me as a sophomore and says, should I take chemistry? I'm scared to death. You'd say some kid wasn't too sure of themselves. And I would say, I will not fail if you do your work as much as you can and you come pick up. And I'm here, I'm here after school, before school, in the plant. So you don't have an excuse. And if you're making all the effort and doing all the labs and I will not fail. We'll have this discussion at the start of the second semester, whether this is really for you. But at the beginning, for first semester, it's a semester grade. And that's it. If you're not turning things in, I guarantee you I will. But you will not fail my class because you're putting in the effort. You're going to learn something, even if I don't have a proper assessment to figure out what it was you learned. A, a lot of testing, unfortunately, is a failure on the part of the test, not the kid. Right? Once my son got a reader, his grades went from all Fs to As and Bs because he couldn't read. Well, heaven's sake, you know, somebody needs you to test you. So be sure that you know that we do a lot of invalid testing in our system. Part of it, he was able to ask a kid for that even in college and he's saying, that's worth it. Then it's going to work for me now because any poor student still is alive. And he knew the words to use. And, and so, I mean, that's the kind of things that I, I, it was interesting because in his social studies class, once I got the, a teacher that thought that, just try it at noon. Every kid that failed the test, come in at noon or after school and read them the test. Tell me how the grades are. And he says, holy cow, not one kid failed. I said, and so they, that became accepted practice then, but it took some convincing. And, and I don't have all the answers, but I do have some questions and we can have a few little things that have helped.
I still stand by, it shouldn't be a little bit, why? I think that opening it up to just a single requirement makes more sense. We have kind of two options. We can lower the bar and everybody can, or we can keep where it's at, find ways to help those that may have struggled a little bit, get over it as well. I like the no-grade option. I've been having a lot of conversations with PTOs. They basically lost the month of school. One child's class that they have stayed at their school for the last three months to catch. And the other child saw that was still, they're staying at their school to try. I think that you provide examples when you have spaces to just say, yeah, we're, we're just going to completely wipe this away. I think gives the wrong impression to students. The world is not just going to wipe your problems. And for those students that just say, screw it, I'm not going to do it. And you can see what other students are going to do. Or take that and take that and talk about the operation. Talked about the things that we see as students, those students can help each other. Those are opportunities to reach out. If you're struggling in this area, you're struggling in that area. I just feel like lowering the bar doesn't make it sense. I do believe that failing people, we want to push them and just our difficulty spaces is a better, harder. So if we're going to require that's a formal one. To, like Bill said, show me the effort. Show me that you're plugging away at this thing. Show me that you are striving, trying. Those are the skills that, with the, the stuff, what a player's looking for. No necessary care that you get there. You care about creativity, you care about problem solving. For the students that aren't doing those things or being put in spaces to hone those skills, that's where we're failing. So as long as there's a penalty for being in that class and they sit there, especially in the last couple of years, have no problem with the marketplace, but provide a mechanism sort of failing them. We still have them to move forward to be have a pass, no pass, possibly, young.
So in other words, for the kid that's plugging away but can't keep up with it. I, 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 and part of this is near and dear to my heart because of family. But Stephen, I asked Stephen the other night, I called, I asked him about that for our last discussion. I said, so what would you do if you had that two years of foreign language? He said, I doubt that I would. Flat out, he said, and I said, what are you going to do about college? And he says, until last year, Oregon State doesn't require it. If I were to get down there, I still don't have to have it. Or I would be trying. That was his answer because language is hard for him. His brain doesn't process language.
And, and that's what the waiver, but I guess.
But there could be a pass. Okay, but you're, you're going to be in that. You know, we want to, we want to have, say, maybe a, a different class where they work on just speaking rather than reading or something. And if you have other options, I, I, you can do that.
Yes, we, we could do pass, no pass. I guess what would help us move forward is if US Board give me some direction and I can reuse that back proposal. I think myself, I like the no-grade option because it makes things easier for transcripting and moving forward. If the board feels like it might be easier for transcripting, but it's not best for kids, then we'll do what's best for kids. So if, I, I've heard, you know, one or two year delay or one, and then the no-grade piece. So why don't you guys give me, you tell me, tell me what you want me to do and I'll bring you a proposal and say, here's what you're going to do.
I, I don't have the, the, the no-grade piece. We have enough credits that a kid can get enough credits to graduate. So it used to be, okay, you have to. That was the other thing is you have to take language. And by the way, there's only two electives. And so you don't have enough, your stock. But by not upping the number of credits too far, we've got what, twenty-eight credits available and twenty-one or twenty-two required, whatever it is. That gives us some room that a kid can still get enough credits to graduate. And try and maybe have a. And try and maybe have a no grade class.
Our juniors are, we're missing that, the free credit elective for our juniors. They won't be able to do that. Their senior year, they're working at Okay, so two credits. But so say they get into K C T, they've been a COVID kid.
Oh, it's the COVID kid.
And they are a junior, they're going to come in their senior year, they're working a half time job, and there's still a way to do it, they're C T. We're going to affect all of those kids if they're top or engineering year right now. But I think we should talk.
And work experience.
Why don't you move in a chair so we can shake your head yes or no?
I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with Kelly, but pause. However, that needs to be, whether it's just a waiver, whatever the case is, I think we can still.
Yeah, so they're scheduled to, but they can't fill out an exception or something.
And I do think that perfect alone, but as a right now, it's still just bad, right?
Well, no, Kelly's identified that, that was the additional, the two C T classes.
No, no, language class.
Yes, it's just correct.
I also think that if we're going to have an expectation, we should probably post additional options.
I I know, but we like, we don't have all to do, but it's not our call either.
No.
But I think that these are putting a lot of pressure on. That maybe trying, that will get us.
I'm going to capture our thoughts here. And I think I don't want to make it more complicated.
Don't make it more complicated.
So how about if I bring back that proposal? I think I understand what Kelly's suggesting. Thought I heard Brian and Melanie aligning with what Kelly said. Bill was kind of, I like no grade, all the trend, however.
And some are getting four, or we can't get four.
At this point, you've heard it now, why don't you come back with this? I I really hired you guys to make these decisions. You had some input now. So you got to move on to next school year, and so I, you know, you can't just keep having.
Okay.
Yes, we talked about over what you said. Okay, they they all.
All right.
Can I ask you a quick question? I know which make, well, from middle school all the way to K P is at the same time, because we've got these kids in almost every grade that are behind because of COVID, no matter what what subject you want to pick, okay. But for right now, because we are short-staffed, because we don't have everybody in all positions. But we would like to sure help the kids. We all know that almost so many of them will do better with one-on-one to the best of our ability. Is to ask for going into next year, I feel that this plan is probably too late for this year, but going in for next year, at least in that subject, if not in a whole bunch of them, is asking for community help of people to come in that know how to speak Spanish, for example, who are more than happy to sit and just talk with kids and get them used to with the language and explaining to them that that obviously couldn't speak English too, so they can't tell us when we screwed up, right? But but anyway, but even in all of the different topics, it would sure be nice. I think we have plenty of people in the community that could come and help. I mean, from cooking to PE to sports, I mean, you know, whatever it is, I think that we're going to need to do that for a couple of years to get everybody caught back up, and get our staff re filled back in and everything else, so.
That's that's kind of an excellent plug for our connect state efforts to not only, you know, connect but identify caring adults, train them up so they can be great volunteers for us. So I'll throw that, throw that out there. Okay, I appreciate you guys. Give me some, it's going to make sense. I want to talk a little bit about standard response protocols. I love you guys' work. What you, you all have one of these. And this is kind of a parent information sheet that I think is very helpful, and I'll check and see if you might want to send this home again. I know some of our principals included that newsletter at the beginning of the year. We're transitioning, this is the 2021 change, so most of our schools transition to this. But before we go into the details, the reason why I want to share is when we have anxious parents and anxious students and anxious staff, and sadly, every time we have one of these tragedies, the anxiety level just gets higher. So, you know, we send out our message. We also are very fortunate that we have an excellent partnership with St. Helens Police. I contact Chief Greenway. He immediately said, yeah, I'm on it. I call in officers in. They're going to be working over time to make sure they're around our schools. Is support for our community, which I think we're blessed to have that relationship. We also do our first responders meeting. Had to had some little couple of gaps during COVID, but as recent as this month, we met with our first responders that included St. Helens Police, that all the police I believe that were on duty were in attendance. State Police, we had a sheriff there. We had administrators from St. Helens, we had administrators and principals from Scopus, Renonia, I believe we had somebody from Rainier. So we bring in as many folks as we can and meet, we have a breakfast. We do a training, this last training was with the FBI. They shared with us statistics and support and suggestions on how to address how to address social media threats. And we have a great conversation, we do some learning, and then we sit around the table with a mix of law enforcement and school personnel and fire and rescue, and talk about what will we do in situations, we call them our tabletop scenarios. So we talk about what we do if an angry individual came to a school with a gun. We talk about what we do if we had a snowstorm and it caught us by surprise and we had schools full of kids and every parent was still stuck in the Portland network. So we go through those scenarios, we talk about them on a regular basis. And I share that because I want our community to know that we take the safety of our community and our students very seriously, and we continually work and have those conversations. And because of that, and those strong relationships that we have with our law enforcement, I can make a quick call to our chief, and he says, I'm on it, and I'm calling people that are on vacation or whatever they're doing, and they're going to be serving our kids. So we're fortunate to have a community that's willing and able to do that. Going through this, I'm going to go through this quickly because I have a video that I'd like to share. I think that will do a better job than me covering it, but the first icon, the hold icon, that's you, if there's something that's going on in a hallway, maybe a maybe a medical emergency, we call a hole. And what that does is notify all students and staff that even if the passing bell rings, you stay in your classroom. And that allows us to have perhaps emergency medical folks to have a clear access to a student or a teacher that may be having an event in a hallway. There's a little bit of a change to the protocol for the for this update, that's secure. That used to be lockout. And that created confusion, can lockout and lockdown. So if you can recall, well, a secure means that there is something going on outside our community, outside of our school. It could be a felony traffic. A felony is, a felon is pulled over at traffic stop, law enforcement will contact the school and say, we want you to secure. And what that means is business continues as usual in the schools, but we lock all of our outside doors and pull the children inside. And the threat would be on the outside. So we use that more often than than we'd like to, but the reason why we use it is so we can keep our kids safe and keep schools going forward. And it's not to be confused with lockdown. Lockdown means there's a bad guy or emergency within the school. That means shelter in place, out of sight, lights out. The difference between the two is there's a, there's an emergency going on in the school, the secure, the emergency is outside of the school. And oftentimes in a secure, it has nothing to do, it's within a mile of the school. The importance of our community understanding that is when we call a secure, it's not necessarily an emergency for families to come to the school. It's, this is just a process that we use to keep kids safe. And then the last two, evacuate, very similar to a fire drill or or fireworks, standard evacuation, and then the shelter in place, that's if there's some sort of hazard or storm going on. So I've got a video that will do a much better job walking us through these protocols. And the the power of these standard protocols is all of our law enforcement know that this is what we use. And we use this throughout the county, and it's used throughout much of Oregon and
First impressions mean a lot.
The United States. We know if there's an event in our school, the cavalry is going to come, there'll be folks coming from all law enforcement agencies, from Portland, Beaverton to Clasktonai and even Longview, if there's an emergency. And we want to make sure that everybody's using the same language. So are you able to pull that up? And does our community, are they able to see the screen?
Yes, I'll share a screen if I can get to work.
Just let somebody have a question to say about this time. So you might, you know, say, hey, go back to Ronnie at Block or whatever it is on the
It's cool.
Yeah.
That way they can find us.
Like when you hire someone, no. The bad time we charge is fifty down to hundred.
School safety has turned into my life's work. We have to have to make sure that when a kid is in our facility, in our care, we are doing everything possible to keep that kid safe. When there's an emergency in a school, it's all entities are going to be responding, and so we have to be on the same page and speak the same language so that we can be the most efficient in our responses and make our students and staff the safest possible. The work that I Love You Guys Foundation is doing sets people up like me to do that work and to do that work the best we possibly can. Standard Response Protocol was inspired by shooting at High School in 2006. At that time, we were using a crisis response panel that was around seventy two pages. All of those seventy two pages really came down to five distinct actions that you could take in the classroom. That was lockdown, lockout, shelter in place, and evacuate. We've since have now added protocols around hold, and we are going to be changing the lockout protocol to secure. That was where the concept of the standard response protocol came from. The standard response protocol is a guide of emergency actions that school staff and teachers and students can use in their emergency circumstances. They're able to provide resources that are vetted by experts from all over the country and throughout the world. The origin and development of the SRP has always had a home in evidence-based information. The intent to go ahead and talking to our law enforcement partners and our first responders and our teachers and our students was to develop the concepts around what works and what doesn't work. That at its core is evidence-based research. Unfortunately, yes, we continue to see acts of violence occurring in schools. And every time one of those happens, we learn something new from that. Yeah, I Love You Guys Foundation does a great job in making sure that their processes and their procedures stay current. Twenty twenty one version, the term lockout has been changed to secure. I can tell you, as a former law enforcement officer, that term was often confused with lockdown, lockdowns. Or a secure situation, as they've changed it to now, would occur on probably a daily basis throughout all the school districts in America. Police ask the school to close their doors and secure their perimeter because there's something going on in the community that has nothing to do with school. But lockdown is a much more serious action to be taken. Usually, it's because of a much more serious situation within the school itself. Because those two actions are so drastically different, we were looking for a change to the SRP, someone calls for a lockdown instead of a lockout. That's a much more distracting and stressful situation for our students and our staff. You can see how language was confused. Teachers wouldn't know what they were talking about. Parents would be confused because they would hear about a lockout. And they thought that was a really terrifying situation, when really their kids weren't even impacted by it. We call for a lockdown, that means there's some active violence occurring inside your facility. When you call for a lockdown, that is lines, lights, out of sight, this building and all buildings, stuff for our protocols. The only way we can release that lockdown protocol is we have to have law enforcement agencies come to this building, get keys, and they go door to door and unlock every single classroom. That takes time out of our educational environment and out of our educational to turn this block out and lock down. By moving to secure, our intent here is that we're going to eliminate that confusion. The other change this year is one action, hold. We can use that hold to say, listen, we're not releasing you out to the hall. Hold is a good intermediate action. We have a situation where we have a student who was in the hallway and that needed medical attention from first responders. For us to be able to say, you're now in a hole, and for students and staff to understand when that bell rings, that you're going to stay put in your classroom, is a huge thing for us. That is critical for us to be able to get first responders in, respond to the situation, and to get first responders out. A drill is, it's a non-traumatic experience. It's about teaching concepts of this is what you do. But you don't have to scare people to do that. Drills are mastery of the basics. We're just trying to teach and reinforce behaviors that we want to exhibit during an emergency. In exercise, we bring in elements of reality that make that that much more intense. On occasion, with your law enforcement partners, and oftentimes in school in the summer, we might do something like that to train our first responders. They need that realism. Kids don't need to feel that. Kids just need to know, this is exactly what I do. It's locks, lights out of sight in a lockdown, and that doesn't have to be command. As a director of safety and security, the new SRP changes allow us to be more flexible. It gives us more options, more tools in the toolbox, to change the language and to base the protocols off of information that's real time and situations that really occur. It's important. This is something that has to continually evolve. We always have to improve to be better and make sure our kids are as safe as they can possibly be when you're at a school. It's the right work at the right time.
So those are protocols that follow as we continue to work to keep students and staff safe. We hope we never have to use them, but like try or drill. That is.
I guess topic, but it's not really listed here, but we all know it's always a possibility. Is that if our area was to ever have a fire, that we need to go, and we all know full well that we couldn't sit here for an hour waiting for every parent to get home from Portland, to then turn right around, or even expect them to, when it could be total chaos by that point? Do we have in all this, because it's not referred to at least, a location that has either been prior talked about or that we could work on, that we would be just loading up telling parents that you don't try to come here when a fire is coming this way, we're going to take your kids and we'll meet you whether you want to say Highway twenty six and Beaverton at Target. Okay, I don't have to start that out there, but some kind of an outdoor or outside location, because to me, out of all the things, unfortunately, that's probably more likely to happen of everything out here.
Well, that that would fall under shelter, start with, and then if there is imminent danger, we we'd need to select a site that was away from the fire. My first choice would be the fairgrounds, but the fairgrounds feels like it would be driving out closer to the woods, right? So I would feel like if there was a fire, we'd have to determine where we were going to go and notify families. We do have a reunification program that's also based on the SRP. Unfortunately, instead of, I should think it was five years ago now. And it worked well. So that would be my.
Yeah, I mean, and I realize that can be true, but it, smoke can be Yeah, I mean, and I realize that can be true, but it, smoke could be the issue without even having the flames be an issue. Yeah, but I also don't want us to decide that that's the place we're going. And now we suddenly can't even go that way or that way on Highway 30 because we're totally surrounded. So we're in a different situation than a lot of other schools are because we only have so many directions to go. And most likely, all of the outside ones are gonna be in that fire. So you better hope you can go one way or the other on Highway 30, you're not.
One side of Highway 30 is not more combustible than the other.
So I guess my answer would be start a shelter place, assess the situation, work with our emergency response folks to determine where to go.
And that's what I'm just thinking that we probably should always, especially at the time that we're still finishing right now and even usually start in September with it being so hot and dry, especially by that point. But it gives us the summer hopefully to work a plan out to be ready for something like that.
Chemical.
Yeah. And we all know an earthquake, tsunami is the same type of situation, but depending on, yeah, it's hard to make those calls. But when you watch a lot of the people that have been, you know, that they'll interview that have been around fires and they'll talk about that they were lucky if they had 10 minutes to grab every single thing that could. It leave an animal sometimes, whatever it may be behind and just going and didn't have to. 10 minutes isn't very long to load that buses, especially for restorers or living out in New York and we still need to get a back ticket or even get to the buses. So just having that kind of idea, since it's a world that we are all having to deal now.
We do have a few school districts that sadly have to go through the scenario. So I can reach out and see what lessons learned.
Trying to be a good first responder. Yeah. Able to call back. Find some of those guys. Whether it's their first response, some of their first responders and some of their school personnel. Just be. We might not have the same scenario, but still a wide-based disaster response is different than.
And the beauty now of Zoom and Google Meet, we get people from around the state.
Well, and one of the things I got too is we all know that when there were even the fire in the gorge, yes, some ember did get on the Washington side. But the first thing they did is have everybody get over on the Washington side, down through the gorge to get out of there. Of course, they only had the Bridge of the Gods and a few other places. They were about as restricted as we are. But for me, the biggest place I kept thinking was even having something like that the Moda Center could be opened immediately if there was a fire in certain areas that buses full of kids could be taken there, which also allows our side to be on the other side of the river by doing that, getting them out of here and at least having one big place if that's where you had to take everybody. But anyway, instead of a school that would be squishing our, you know, 2,000 kids in with 2,000 others somewhere. But another big, big location that gets them someplace to go and parents to know that's where they're gonna be taken if that was ever happening.
That brings us to 6.0, others to address the board for agenda. Okay. This is 7.0, actually. Any discussion? All clear? All right, it brings us to 8.0, okay, we need to put June 8 forward work session.
I asked a 30 second question. You guys all have one of these, right? I'm, I know I'm here at Scott graduation, but I was just thinking while we're all sitting here, is that get everything written down for especially the graduation week, whether it's practice in the morning, which I believe is like, yeah, let's get us all on the same page. Cause I, I wanna make sure I don't miss from the eighth graders to the practices to whatever else is going on. But I just thought it might be good for us because it's not all on here, definitely.
So your cruise in is on the eighth.
That starts at seven, doesn't it? Maybe, isn't it about seven o'clock or was it early?
For the cruise?
Yeah.
But I'm pretty thorough listed that just to have the date.
Yeah, do you, I can send you all the weekly page of all the graduation activities and all of the times.
Same time.
Yeah. And just, and every time I look at stuff, I keep getting this little part, this little part, I have budget on this part. I have graduations on this part. And I don't wanna miss if you guys have any great things going on at your schools at the end. So anyway, just be like.
Your awards and barbecue are all coming.
Yeah, there's two awards. So one is a senior award assembly that's after school. And then is there one that's during school, am I correct?
Isn't it the one that?
We are combining it, so we're, we're having the senior assembly and then there's the after.
And that's, that's during school.
And this is the one at 1:30, like on the Thursday or something like that?
Uh, or the Thursday.
Oh, is that okay? Well, if nothing else, guys, just remember everybody that you're gonna be a mess and you need to, you know, make sure you got every day like that.
I'm really trying to figure out some contractors.
Kelly just referred today to two events that she missed and she doesn't know how she missed them. So I just wanted to make sure we were all gonna be showing up where we're supposed to be.
There's a music, well, but so half of it, I think it's my fourth grader doesn't like to tell us things, but she maybe like. Is what I'm wondering, but I'm not getting the notification. So the day of our.
I came up with a really cool idea. Figure out how to cover the track so that people can drive on it, right? And then the families dress their cars all up, just like we were letting them do at the courthouse. Only they all come in and they pull up right in front of the entire grandstand full of everybody. And they all get out and get their diploma and get back in their car and drive back out the track. And you can put the two together.
I'll not drive on that truck.
But I'm gonna cover it, I'm gonna come up with a great cover idea, okay? Cause it was so fun to do that.
So to save money, many, many, many years ago, once we did the first one, we made that over existing cinders. So it does not have an eight to 10 inch rock sub base that it needs. And if we put heavy vehicles on it, we destroy it. So there's a simple answer, reason for my affirmative, you know. But been there, done that, worked hard to get that.
Okay, then Wildwood golf carts, okay. So you took Wildwood golf carts with like a trailer.
You can put a lightweight car, that's okay, but.
Are we done? Are we done recording?